All right, well, my lock says it's six o'clock. That's a little bit slow up on the wall. So I think we should call this operation to order. Will we state for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, if you recall the roll, please.
Dwayne Jones.
Here.
Linda Seiler.
Here.
Shelley Mamberto.
Here.
Marty Spalding.
Here.
John Beech.
Here. Thank you.
And welcome, Marty. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that's in front of you?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Ouditions or deletions? Roll call vote?
Dwayne Jones.
Yes.
Linda Seiler.
Yes.
Shelley Mamberto.
Yes.
Marty Spalding.
Yes.
John Beech.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, and this is from our last meeting in February. And a few of you were not here, so if you have questions or changes, comments, anything? If not, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Be second.
Second.
Great. Roll call.
Dwayne Jones.
Yes.
Linda Seiler.
Yes.
Shelley Mamberto.
Yes.
Marty Spalding.
Yes.
John Beech.
Yes.
All right. That being done, all the formalities out of the way, welcome everybody. Thanks for being here. We have a public hearing, and this is in regards to a request for variance at the property commonly known as 348 River Street. Katie, do you want to give us a brief overview, and then we can hear from the public? And the owner, is there a question there?
Yes, so this hearing is for the property addressed as 346 and 348 River Street. The applicant is seeking a variance from the ordinance for Section 514 parking, bike parking, and sidewalks, specifically subsection H, which reads, "For all permitted uses and special uses in the C3 district, the parking provisions of this section shall not apply except to hotels, motels, and residential use condominiums. Required parking shall be provided within 200 feet of the building. One space shall be provided per dwelling unit." So granting of this variance would allow for the use of a hotel to take place on the parcel without providing the required parking for the development.
Thank you. As the owner, request her here, would you like to tell us a little bit about what your plan is?
Yeah, hi, thanks for having me. My name is James Lewis. I work for Fennec Construction Group, part of the ownership structure that's seeking to redevelop the Music Box Theater. We're planning to redevelop it into a hotel with five units and a restaurant on the River Street level. The building is a historic building, as you know. It's been designated and it's received its Part I approval by the state. We're seeking historic tax credits in the renovation and restoration of it. We're also seeking money through the MADC, through their community revitalization fund. The project really wants to, like, the goal of the project is to bring tourists into the downtown area. And one of the challenges in a historic building is, you know, the thing was built in 1910. There was no cars when the building was built. Zoning ordinances didn't exist. Zoning ordinance have changed over the years. You know, there might have been parking at one point required for, all the uses that are now not required for. You know, we think it's a public amenity to have hotel in the downtown district. You know, it provides more opportunity for the public and tourists to patronize the businesses that are around it. And, you know, we're trying to attract the crowd that's otherwise renting the, you know, turn your housing stock into short-term rentals. So trying to move some of that, those uses downtown where they're better patrons of your businesses. You know, I don't think it's providing a significant detriment to any of the other uses surrounding it, as, you know, the building is either going to be vacant or it's going to get redeveloped into something, and every other use has no parking requirement. So if it gets redeveloped, you know, people are going to come there, they're going to use it, and they're going to park somewhere. You know, they're going to park on the street, or they're going to park in the city lot. You know, the ordinance does allow us to rent spaces, or lease long-term spaces, from anyone else, and within 200 feet. And the one place that would be, would be the city lot. But that would then restrict those spaces from anyone else, from leasing them, which seems to be not in the public good. I think most people would agree that the public would prefer to compete over the spaces than have us exclusively monopolize them. And overall, I think it's a, you know, it's a big investment in the downtown area, and it's going to be a great project for the downtown. You know, the Music Box has been vacant for a good number of years, and it's gone through a number of developers trying to redevelop it. And we have almost all our financing in place, and this is a pretty significant hurdle for us to get through. And if we can't get through it, I don't know that we have an alternate option. So I think it's very important for the project to receive this variance. And yeah, open to your questions. If you want to give them due power after public comment has happened, I can, however you want.
Yeah, let's go around the room and see who else has anything to say. I know Mark, you have on behalf of the EDC.
Yes. So thank you, good evening, everyone. For the record, Mark Miller, appearing as the Economic Development Director as part of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Downtown Development Authority lead. So would like to just brief you a little bit on the activity here to get us to this point. So as you often hear and know, the DDA's role in downtown is to foster economic growth and development, to create an attractive downtown, as well as strengthen businesses and create a sense of community. So with that purpose, we've been focused on this property. This has been a priority for the city and for the downtown, with both the redevelopment-ready community program that the city has undertaken and been a part of. The city and the boards and commissions have selected this as a priority in the past for redevelopment. The Downtown Development Authority also has, in their contract with the chamber, to have me working on economic development downtown, has this as a priority for redevelopment. It's sat vacant for 10 years, over 10 years. And, you know, so we've been working with prospective owner and developer since the beginning of January 2022, and have worked through a lot of the steps to get to a development and get us to where this could be a viable, long-term business. One of the benefits here is having this particular model with a restaurant and a hotel is that it's going to attract people who will spend money in our downtown. And they have done the work there and shown that the visitor spending, as anticipated, would be 1.3 million in our downtown. So that's a big benefit to the DDA. It's been a long-term focus for us all. And, you know, we would like to ask for your support of this variance, in part because the property itself is unique. And as many of our properties are in downtown, you know, it has some challenges based on its age and its location. And so to ask for something that is landlocked and trying to put something else there, I mean, there's an unnecessary hardship, and it's difficult to try to do much with the building. That's why it's been sitting vacant. It's been a difficult challenge. And so, you know, with that, we hope that you will support this variance and allow us to move forward, because I think that it will benefit our downtown, our community, in a number of different ways. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mark.
All right.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Jeff Gordon, 411 River Street. I urge you to approve this. This is, it makes great sense to the downtown district and the area. I know parking could be a contentious point for everybody, but restricting different businesses and investors, and forcing them to try to find parking in that, in the footprint that we have, I think that's, it feels antiquated to me. I recommend that you really look at this ordinance and frankly remove, you know, condos, motels, hotels, you know, cancel this piece of it out, because we all recognize there's not the footprint and the space available. And carving out little pieces of parking for individual uses to meet this sort of ordinance really doesn't benefit anybody in the downtown district. So I urge you to take a look at this ordinance, obviously approve this, but in the future, you know, let's remove this, and the next investor that comes along, they won't have this as an obstacle that they have to contend with and think through before they invest. Thanks for your time.
And just so everybody's aware, you own the building directly across the street from the subject property, is that correct?
My wife does.
Your wife does. I need to be clear on that.
Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
What do the other folks on River Street seem to think about the parking if this goes through?
Well, from my perspective, I really can only speak for myself. I'm somewhat concerned about, you know, people, parking is staying there forever, but the reality is we have a parking ordinance, two-hour parking. And if we actually, if there's an issue, if we actually enforce that particular rule, write tickets, put parking meters, you know, whatever the enforcement mechanism is, from my perspective, that's the better way to address it. I mean, ultimately, parking is what it is, as long as we all adhere to the rules. And frankly, the issue's not visitors, it's really more of the folks that are workers downtown, that park downtown, so.
I was in the DDA in the 90s, and nothing has, you know, except you and me both.
Fair enough. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And just to be aware, there have been some written communications come in. Is there anybody else first that would like to say anything, and then we can talk about the letters and emails that have shown up?
I'm Lee Anderson, I own the building, 354 River. I just have a question. Does this variance, is it just for the hotel, or is the whole body of the thing allowed? So for example, he's asking for a variance for a hotel, but it also says residential use condominiums. So my question is, if you approve this, can you condo the building?
Chair, I will just remind that during public comment, you don't necessarily have to answer questions, but I would be willing to discuss that with this individual, so...
There's no reason not to, for sure.
So with, that's actually something that I have been speaking with the city attorney on, with the residential use condominiums being incorporated with that regulation. So, and I'm sorry, your question was if it was...
If you give a variance for a hotel, are you also giving variance at the same time for motels and residential use condominiums?
So, no, they would be giving a variance for the use of a hotel. That's only included in there because that's in the regulation. But I will say that upon recent conversation with the city attorney, that is something we're going to look to amend specifically for the residential use condominiums, because that's a question that I've had that's come up, you know, when people condo, are they now subject to these regulations? And I have since discovered that, in a sense, our ordinance may kind of supersede the condominium act, and that regulation either needs to apply to any, you know, like apartment or residential unit, or not at all. So that's kind of sidetracked from this specific request, but yeah, ultimately, that regulation wouldn't necessarily apply if they're going to, you know, condo something. Yeah, the parking can't necessarily apply to that. So, but this is specific to the hotel.
Okay, that's, yeah, I don't have any problem with the hotel. I just was worried there would be a backdoor attempt. Get the hotel approved, build a hotel, hey, we're going to condo it, and you gave us permission to do it. So that was my point. All right, thank you.
Anyone else care to say anything? Would you like to, Katie, review or at least talk about the communications that have come? I know there are two or three.
Yes, so I did receive two written communications. I did review the bylaws prior to this meeting, and they do not specifically state that letters need to be read aloud during the meeting, but we can do that if you guys prefer.
Has everybody, has everybody had a chance to see those?
I saw them, they could be paraphrased.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only two.
Yep, absolutely.
So the first comment received was from a, an individual who actually lives in one of the apartments on River Street, and their comment was similar to one of our verbal comments that we received today, that, you know, if we're not requiring for this, you know, should we not require for other uses on, the other uses listed on River Street? They specifically asked about apartments. I don't think they understood that currently apartments don't require parking. And then they also had some comment about the dining platforms, but we know that you guys do not have anything to facilitate, you know, you don't have anything to do with facilitating that. I will say that I responded to this individual and let her know that she could give me a call if she wanted to further discuss her questions. And then the other written comment was from 340 River Street, and they showed support for the, for the variance request, and then also made a couple additional requests upon the city that you guys have nothing to do with facilitating, but I will forward this off to the city manager at the request of the ZBA, if you guys think that's appropriate.
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Just knowing that there are concerns about those upper lots.
Okay.
And the public restroom area that seems to be a, seems to be an issue. And then I also had the occasion to talk to the chairman of the DDA. They are in full-throated support of this as well. They work long and hard on it, according to Kyle. I think Mark would concur with that, and so.
So I appreciate the opportunity to come back up, but there was a resolution of support for this project, and ended up being unanimous at the DDA, which basically essentially says that the DDA supports the development and urges any of the entities in decision-making to waive the parking requirements for this project. The other thing that Dr. Beech said, or asked a question about in terms of what other interests are downtown that are supportive, there are five persons on the DDA who have property interest downtown, and so that unanimous support obviously translates that those folks were engaged and deliberative on that topic.
Awesome, thank you. Is there anything else from the public? Any comments? All right, then I think we can, any questions you guys would like to, go ahead.
I have a comment and then a question. I took a look at the definition of a hotel in the zoning ordinance, and it doesn't have a threshold for size. I heard a comment made that maybe hotels shouldn't be included in a parking requirement in the downtown district. I think that would be dangerous if somebody decided they were going to put in a 200-room hotel and not be required to have any parking. I think that could be a real nightmare. What the ordinance lacks, both in the definition of the hotel and in this particular section, is some kind of a threshold. I don't know about anybody else, but when you throw the word hotel at me, I don't think five rooms. I think 20, maybe at a minimum. Maybe even in a, you know, even in a motel, you're going to have a dozen. The intent in the ordinance, I think, is pretty clear. If you're going to put in something, and the residential condominium project is kind of the same thing. If somebody says condos to you, you don't think a couple. You know, if somebody's going to take a building and split it in half and call each one a condo, that doesn't come to my mind as a condo. That comes to my mind as not a whole lot different. What's being proposed here isn't much different than a boarding house, or multifamily use, or a lot of things that are not bound by this section of the ordinance. So it seems to me that perhaps we should recommend or ask somebody to investigate plugging a number in there, that either in the definition of a hotel or in this section. I think it would be more applicable to this section. I think the other thing that comes to mind, and this is the question I had after the comment, I also, when I think of hotel, I think of daily occupancy, a front desk, porters and bellboys, daily room service, and I don't think those things are anticipated here. To my question to the developer would be, why have you termed this a hotel at all? I don't know if it's got some nuance with the financing in order to qualify for it, but to me, this is more of a restaurant and short-term rental division of the building, and in that case, you're not even required to be here to ask for this parking at all. So my question might be, why are you even here? Because we're dealing, we're dealing in some semantics. But that would be my, my comment would be, maybe we've got a little tweaking to do with the ordinance in not calling every two-room use a hotel, maybe making some kind of a rational cutoff number, and/or in the definition of hotel, qualify hotel uses being something that is a daily rental with a full fleet of customary services, because I don't, I think we got a square peg in a round hole with this ordinance and this use. So that's my question, my comment.
Sounds like we have perhaps more Planning Commission and City Council work to do on amending or fixing the ordinance, but you were going to say?
Yeah, so that is actually tracking very closely to an internal conversation that we've had, you know, that this specific development has kind of spurred, that, you know, with the idea of these being transient lodging, the best fit for a use right now under the current zoning ordinance is a hotel, and they wouldn't have the option to offer that transient lodging if they were to come in as some kind of like apartment or dwelling units. So, but yes, we have most definitely, pretty much everything that Marty said, you know, maybe putting some kind of threshold or defining like boutique hotels. Yeah, and then, because really, I would agree that the intent of the ordinance, what's that?
How many rooms are at the room still?
Yeah, right, I think, yeah.
Nine, something like that.
Eight, 12, yeah. So, yeah, defining, you know, maybe boutique hotels, because I very much agree that the intent of the ordinance for that type of use to require parking is for something like the gateway development. You know, like that was a, they actually were granted approval for a 100-room hotel. I don't think that the city necessarily wants to see a 100-room hotel with no parking, but something like what is being proposed, you know, doesn't necessarily have that same amount of impact on our parking availability. So yes, I agree, and the planning department was tracking with that as well. I think that if that's something that the ZBA wants to recommend, we could most definitely take that to the Planning Commission and see what we can do to modify the ordinance.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one way to, one way to parse that out might be to focus on the existing footprint. So if you're sitting within the footprint of an existing building in the downtown district, then it'd be fine. If you are going to go beyond that footprint, meaning go up, go wide, you know, in essence, change the use and the actual character of the structure.
Expand.
Then you'd be in a situation where really taking a good look at that parking situation would make sense, in my opinion.
Appreciate it. John, you got anything, any other questions?
No, I'm in agreement, and I was right along with Katie with a boutique hotel. As soon as you started talking, it's like five, five rooms, I thought, eh, this isn't really a hotel, but...
And it's become readily apparent that John, or that Marty stays in better places than I do with bellboards.
It's a hostel. Thought I can call it a hostel.
There you go. So, okay, if there's nothing else, buddy, another question or other comment?
I understood that the project wasn't just a five-room motel, it's a five-room family hotel with multiple rooms per unit. So it's not going to be just five people and five cars, as Sarah was showing up. It could be many more cars and many more people than just like a motel, you know, you get two people in a room, that's all that can go in a room. So there is more traffic possibly than in just five cars or five parks.
So are these proposed rooms, hotel rooms per se, are they going to be multi-room suites? Is that what we're looking at, or multi-bedroom apartments?
Yeah, so there's a variety of different room types in the hotel, based on the existing structure and what fits, but the largest is a, we have two, two-bedroom rooms, we have two suites that will operate more like, they all have kitchens, but the smallest ones don't have bedrooms at all, right? So they're just, you know...
Those are studios.
Studios, right, similar to that. So that's the range in your, in your five units right there.
Two-bedroom is the largest?
Two-bedroom is the largest. So I mean, we do anticipate that there would be like two households, you know, coming together on vacation, right? That's a target demographic that we're chasing, right? And we want to capture that demographic away from them renting a house, you know, in the neighborhood.
Is it your intent to seek dedicated parking in the downtown lot, or they, or your customers just going to be at the mercy of what's on the street?
We're going to see how it goes, but if, you know, it doesn't go well, then we will try to seek some dedicated parking from the city, but it's not, the lot that we're thinking of isn't the one on River Street, it would be the one, you know, up this way. That's, and it's not within 200 feet.
How long a stay do you envision? Are people coming for a month? Are people coming for a couple days?
Yeah, the average is usually three nights, but, you know, we'll have a two-night minimum. So I don't really anticipate someone coming for a month and Airbnb and working.
Summer or...
Probably not. I mean, who knows, but...
But I've just watched you envision.
Yeah, we don't envision people, you know.
If they want to pay the freight, then...
Yeah.
That was my comment. Expensive.
It'd be expensive, yeah.
Expensive.
Okay, appreciate it. Anything else? If not, Katie, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, then let's close the public hearing. Do I need a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay, and now we can move on. So we do have action pending under the Business section, and that would be this variance. Comments? Opposed against? What are you guys thinking? Ready to take a, go through this convoluted process of taking a vote?
Well, I do have a couple of maybe questions or seeking some guidance from planning. I know, seeking variance for the zoning, but, you know, we did bring up several issues that are real and probably impact other potential projects. So tonight, are you just seeking for this gentleman, this specific variance, and then we'll take care of any other recommendations separately?
Yes.
Okay.
That was it?
That's it. I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty solidly minded when it comes to projects like this. I like them. I think they're great for downtown. I think they're great for the community. I think these are things that, when I moved here 14 years ago, that I had hoped for this place. I have, I raised children here, I work and live here, so I like this. I don't like empty buildings for 10 years.
That's exactly right, yeah. What's your thoughts?
I think it probably sounds like a good idea. I didn't like the ordinance talking about enforcing the two-hour parking ordinance. None of the businesses I know want them to do that, but that's outside this issue. I don't really have any issues with it. This sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, and there are other underlying issues, like you said, with the actual, the owners and store owners and what have you, up and down the street using up parking spots, I get that. Gents? Marty?
The hotel use is a use by right in the district. I don't think there's any question that it's allowed. The parking is the only real snafu here, and I think that if we did this, that we might want to, because they have not yet maybe refined what we're thinking about suggesting they do, maybe if we were to approve this, make it a condition that it is limited to the five units that are proposed. that are proposed. But if they want to expand, add more units, whatever the use might be, if the use has changed, they need to come back.
We can stipulate that, right?
Yes, yeah, I do like that.
I just favor the least amount of government.
Yeah.
Regulation and let's go for it.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on this. I do believe.
Yes.
So, I'll read the question and then we will answer... So, if everybody recalls and, and those out sitting there that haven't been through this operation, it's kinda goofy, cause we will, it's basically affirming a double negative. And so, when we're saying that it doesn't do something and we say yes, that's what it doesn't do. Okay. So, that's how it works.
And just to remind the board, it is best to not just simply answer yes, but to provide justification that Nancy can record in the minutes so that if this were to go on to a higher court, we have sound justification recorded within the meeting.
Here court?
Yes, can always be appealed.
Wow. How's that work?
You guys are like a court, really.
I know.
Yeah.
I thought we were it. Nope. We're entry level. Entry level? All right, all right, let's get started then. Number one, the requested variance is not contrary to the public interest or to the intent and purpose of this ordinance. Nancy, if you would, call the roll.
Yes, I think it's beneficial to the public interest.
Linda?
Yes, I also think it's beneficial.
Shelley?
Yes, it is definitely not contrary to the public interest, it's in the public interest.
Marty?
Yes, I think it meets the intention of the ordinance.
John?
Yes, beneficial.
All right. Number two, and there's a number, there's, I think, eight of these guys, so bear, bear with us. The requested variance does not establish a use that is not permitted by right or by special use permitted in the zoning district. Nancy?
Dwayne?
It is allowed, yes.
Linda?
Yes, it would be allowed.
Shelley?
Yes, it's allowed.
Marty?
Yes, it's specifically an allowed use.
John?
Yes, an allowed use, all right.
Number three, the requested variance does not create an adverse effect upon properties in the immediate vicinity or in the district.
Dwayne?
That is true and I think that's been borne out by the neighbors' support.
Linda?
Yes, I don't think it would bother any of the neighbors.
Shelley?
Yes, I think it's a positive effect.
Marty?
Yes, with the suggested limitation as to number of units.
Yes, testimony at hearing.
All right. Number four, the requested variance is not of a recurrent nature to require a change in the zoning ordinance. Ready.
Dwayne?
Yes, it's not a recurrent request, it wouldn't become a recurrent request, although, as stated and discussed, I think the zoning ordinance needs to be revisited. But yes, to this particular instance in this question.
Yes, it's a, it's a one-time situation.
Yes, it's not recurrent, but agreed the, the language needs to be revisited.
Yes, although, I'm, other than perhaps the Ramsdale, I'm not drawing any thoughts on there being any other hotels in that district. Yet.
You got the manatee in, but that is, they have their own parking.
Correct. But yes.
I think that's their own parking, is that a, is that a...
It's private, that's public and the rest.
Yeah, okay.
And they have parking down below.
Correct, yep, okay.
John?
Yes, in this instance.
Number five, the requested variance is for property under the control of the applicant.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Think that's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Marty?
That appears to be the representation.
You own it, right?
Yes.
I don't know it for fact, but it depends with the papers.
We'll take it at face value, yeah. You good, John?
Yep, I got John.
You got John?
I got.
Okay, sorry. Okay, number six, the requested variance was not self-created by the applicant or the property owner.
I think that's true. I think it's a matter of a building having built, being built in 1910, didn't create that problem.
Linda?
Yes, it seems clear that it wasn't self-created.
Shelley?
Yes, this is a legacy issue.
I'm a little confused about how you would define self-creation in that if the use were something else, it wouldn't be required. That if the upper floors were used for whatever, it was not subject to the zoning ordinance. So, I'm, I guess I'm in agreement with this, with that definition unclear in my mind.
Yes, existing structure.
Number seven, there is not an alternative that would allow the improvement to the property without the requested variance. I think that is a true statement. No place to put parking on the property, so my answer would be yes to that.
Okay. Linda?
Yes, there's no, no way to park there.
Shelley?
Yes, no way to park.
Marty?
Yes, the, the improvement as proposed could not be done without the variance, that's clear.
John?
Yes, no property for parking.
All right. Number eight, that doesn't mean we're done, but, the requested variance is the minimum amount necessary to still permit the reasonable use of the land. Yes.
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right. Now, we have some special conditions and we have to answer affirmatively to at least one of these, I think, is that right, Katie? Is that how that works?
Yes, just one of these has to be justified and answered yes to.
Uh, let's see here, which one do we like? I would say the first one, we could easily talk about. Are there practical difficulties with the property that prevents full compliance of the requirements of the ordinance? Well, I think we've pretty well established that.
There are, yes.
So, why don't we start with that question? See how we end up.
Okay.
And you got my answer is yes.
I should also, yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Shelley? And Marty?
Yes, as it is proposed, that's true.
John?
Yes.
Well, we could continue, but I think that's all that we need.
That's all there is.
With that, I think we've given our justification and do we need a motion then to, I think we need a motion to approve the variance?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate to do one solid motion that, you know, the zoning board of approve, or Board of Appeals approves the variance as presented for five, a five-room hotel. And that can, you know, specifically be in the motion.
Marty, you want to affirm that motion?
I would do so.
That works for you? Is there a second?
Second.
Shelley? All right. Nancy, if you would call the roll, please.
Dwayne Jones?
Yes.
Linda Seiler?
Yes.
Shelley Mamberto?
Yes.
Marty Spalding?
Yes.
John Veitch?
Yes.
All right, we have approved that variance. Is there, we have no other old business that we need to talk about? Katie, do you have anything staff-wise? Nancy, either of you?
The only thing that I had, it's not necessarily a communication, but the, the two variances that the zoning board of appeals granted last summer, one for 313 Maple Street and then one for Morton Salt, both of those applicants have notified me that they do not anticipate finishing in a year and when a variance is granted, you have the 365 days to have a land use permit issued and construction complete and/or the use commenced. I have inquired with the city attorney on this if we would have to make them go through the entire process and hold another public hearing. He has confirmed, as I speculated, that they do not have to go through the entire process. We can simply hold another meeting and get them on the agenda, as I guess it would be technically old business, and get an extension requested for each of them. So, I would, I did just wanna get it in your guys' minds that we will have a meeting coming up. The one variance was granted in July and the other was in August, so we do have some time until that deadline, but if we get a meeting scheduled in the next, you know, month or two, we can make sure that they're, you know, taken care of and that we have that extension granted before their approvals expire.
Is there a reason that it isn't two years like it is on the planning commission? Why this is just one year?
Um, I, I can't remember if it's directly out of the zoning enabling act, but it is very typical to see across all ordinances that 365 days, so I'd have to confirm if it's a statutory requirement, but right within the ordinance, it does allow for the ZBA to grant an extension, so that's something that we could potentially keep in mind for future variances, you know, making sure that the applicant is aware that they can, that they have to finish in a year and that they can, cause then we could look to grant some other timeframe right at that approval. But, yeah, it's, it's typical to see that one year for the, the variances.
That Maple Street address is actually your neighbor to the south, right?
Yes.
That's the duplex?
Yes.
They just went back through the planning commission?
Right. For their special use permit?
Yeah, for their special use.
Yeah, and then with the building permits and frost laws and things like that, he, it's, he knows that it's gonna be cutting it real close for him to finish in August and then Morton Salt had, well, I had kinda contacted them to see where they were at with things and they said they will not be complete with the silo building by July 13th. So, I'm gonna reach back out to Chad Whitman, the property owner of Maple Street and inform him that we'll get a meeting scheduled for both of them to get an extension. And I don't think that...
I don't think anything done in a year anymore.
Yeah, right, right.
Marty about that, right?
Yeah.
Haven't finished in a year.
Way to show up.
Yeah, exactly.
It's hard to read by hot water, but it's done in a year.
Yeah, so we'll get an email out to you guys. I don't know if that's something you wanna try to decide tonight, or we can just get an email out with a couple potential dates and get something scheduled.
Yeah, let's see what works for them.
Okay.
And then, you know, you can just get with all of us by email or whatever and we'll, we'll come up with a mutual, mutually agreeable date.
Yeah.
Any other public comments, communications? Do we have anything else that anybody had sent in that?
Nope.
Nope? Anybody? Thank you all for being here and with that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Everybody seconded it, all right. Adjourned. Thank you.
That was easy.
I took notes on everything they said.
Okay. Look at it.